Hello.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is six thirty. Tonight is Monday, September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. This is our committee of the whole meeting. We have, just on the consent agenda tonight, all we have are expenditures roughly just shy of five point three million. Are there any questions or discussion on the, on the bills? We've got some time here, Mr. City Manager. We could do that, so. Oh, that's all right. Seeing none of that, we have our second reading to amend Chapter eighteen of the Code Ordinances for the Property Maintenance Code. I don't believe there's any questions that have come up on that sense. I think that's it, so. Why don't we'll, we'll start with comments, discussion. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Election coming up November fourth, twenty twenty-five. It is a local election. The items on it are for Kent ISD and then the city, or the Granville School District is what will be on that ballot. Because it's local, we're not required to do the early voting, so that won't be taking place. And it'll be our first time with our new consolidated precincts, so. Seems to be a lot of residents that come in or with their applications or calling for information, they seem to know that that took place, which is good. I think we did a pretty decent job at getting that information out there. It was on all the ID cards. We've had it on different things, so. That seems to be taken positively by residents. As far as the mass ballots, so our permanent ballot list, we have just over fifty-one hundred people on that list. And that's anybody that signed up to receive their ballot automatically before elections. Those will be going out September twenty-fifth, so hitting mailboxes that week. That's all I got, though.
And you've done a phenomenal job, like you'd said, that everybody, well, everybody seems to be aware of that. And then you had a plan as we get a little bit closer, social media a couple more times.
Yeah, we'll do it leading up probably one time this month and then a few times next month as well, especially like the day before or the week before the actual election to post that information again.
And so you don't feel bad? There's always gonna be that one person or persons that's going to, I didn't know. And you did everything under the sun to let them know, so.
We try.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
I just would pose a question to city management. If we have an understanding of the potential implications for a short-term state government shutdown? That may be something to just do some assessment of payments come in, things like that. Because I think we're close to a coin flip on whether or not we will be in that situation.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think we'll be affected slightly, you know, maybe with revenue sharing, but those payments come in, you know, not every week or anything, and maybe a little bit with Act fifty-one, but other than that, I think we're pretty resilient to that.
That, that's kind of what I figured, and I suspect that we will probably be within the realm of we can handle the delay because it won't be not coming at all. And frankly, when it does come in, there will probably be more road funding, if I were to guess. So, I think it'll be fine. I'm just putting that out there for consideration.
Yep. I'll run that by Dan just to make sure, but I think we're pretty, you know, I think we get those payments quarterly. Same with the Act fifty-one, so I think we're, we're probably fine at this point, but good reminder.
Would we have any impact on court operations?
Uh, I, I don't, I, I don't know. I'd have to look at that.
I, I don't know. I was just asking.
May, maybe just a quick review of state funding sources.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good stuff. Nothing, please. Come on. Okay, you've got a couple minutes, so. Commissioner Chase?
Uh, we had Planning Commission last week Wednesday approved a Brothers Building on Northridge and then also approved a special land use and a final area site plan for a commercial building for an indoor shooting range at Shippers and Northridge. So, those will be all great for our city, so.
Has anybody seen the, the visor, the new visor building with the Delta Plex on the parking lot there?
Yeah.
That looks sharp.
Yeah. It, you would never have known that it used to be a parking lot by any means.
No, and it's, it is such a significant upgrade. Quite frankly, the neighborhood seems fine with, with that. You know, watching Facebook pages up there and stuff, I mean, not hearing any of the, you know, the chatter that, um, I think it's better than the parking lot where you would have the, the, the meetups with the cars and stuff, and we were having more problems than we had.
Absolutely.
You know, so, all good. Are you sure that was it for the Planning Commission meeting?
Yeah, it was short, like an hour.
Like three of them. Oh, good. Commissioner DeShane?
I'm also.
Thank you for covering at the.
Next Gen?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was wonderful. All I guess.
I will just report on that. Uh, we had the Next Gen Academy meeting, and the DPW, as always, did a fantastic job. They really are, take pride in their job and the facilities and the trucks and the equipment, and they do a very, very thorough tutorial on their jobs and how it affects the city. And I know that all of the members that did attend from the committee enjoyed it, and they just praised them, so thank you again.
Awesome, good stuff. Mr. City Manager?
Oh, now that you've raised a few topics, I'll touch on a couple places.
You get a long list there.
Not a long list, but you mentioned the visitor project over by the Delta Plex. That's actually one of the items, if you've seen, on the Traffic Committee tomorrow. And Delta Plex was there. We posted every, all, all along Hillside is no parking because we were having issues there from people attending events and parking all over the streets. I think one of the items tomorrow is to remove those, some of those no parking signs, which should help some of the neighbors in that neighborhood make some parking situations. I'm sure they'll look at that favorably, and you might be seeing a traffic committee order, or traffic control order on that at some point. A week or two, two weeks ago, I guess, at, at the Personnel Committee, we talked about some restructuring we're looking at around some of the city departments, so. Probably in about two weeks, you'll be seeing the Department of Public Services, or, yeah, I think that's what we're calling it, which is kind of combining some of the DPW and engineering services together under one umbrella, so. We're still kind of working out some of the details on that, but I think it'll be a good model. It gives us a lot more flexibility and cross-pollination between the departments. They work so closely anyways and gives us some opportunities for the future, especially for some growth with some of the staff in both of those departments, so. Excited to roll that out soon. And then the, I think Kevin sent out a notification about our staff function we have coming up on the twenty-fourth back in DPW. We're gonna have a, just kind of, we usually do one in the summer, but it's kind of late summer now. Just recognition for the staff and all the good work they've been doing, so. We'll show off our new break rooms a little bit, and I think we're pretty much done with the remodeling in the DPW break room. City Hall break room, we're waiting on some furniture, but if you haven't been back to either one of them, should check them out. They really turned out nice, and especially at DPW, they got some nice comfortable chairs now in their break room, and they're, they're super happy about those, so. And some of the other improvements, they have matching microwaves and they all work at once, so.
Well, and they have the hand-me-downs of the hand-me-downs for the longest time, just.
Well, half of the stuff they got out of cleanup days, they could find a microwave and plug it in and, yeah.
Yeah, work.
Sometimes it would work, sometimes it would spark. And then last but not least, the library, you can probably see every time you drive by, there's more and more steel going up, making some really good progress on that. Things are moving along quite nicely there. Starting next week, you'll be seeing the, the big wooden beams will be going up on the roof, so they'll really be taking shape. They're called the glue-laminated structures, which are the big laminated beams, so you, you could see kind of where they're gonna sit out there. If you look at the tops of all those posts, so they're gonna be going that way and that way, so. Will really be taking shape next week, so you'll see the big crane out here and, and that. And, you know, we're working around some challenges with the parking and the access. So we're putting in a new driveway by the PD, so. The Center Drive is closed, so we've been, see all the signs out there directing people to court. But today was really the first full day of an impact of that, but seemed to go pretty smoothly. We'd made a few minor adjustments last couple of days, but so far, so good. Weather's been cooperating, and once they get the roof on and enclosed, they'll be really, you know, concentrating on the inside, so. Moving along, I think we have a committee meeting, subcommittee meeting this Thursday, so.
Sounds real.
So, other than that, that's all I have.
Good signage, some additional signage out for court and stuff out there. It was.
Yeah, we were having people pull in this parking lot and coming into these front doors and stuff, and it was just not real clear at first, so. Like they got the picture now, and we made some changes by the PD and one of the islands. It had to be removed anyways, but we removed it on Friday, put some gravel in there, so it's helped with some of the court. We had a trial there Friday morning, so it was a little, little messy Friday when we were working, and they had a trial going on. But it should be in better shape for soccer starting, I think, this weekend back in the park, so.
Is that why it was so busy Friday morning?
Yeah, they had a trial going on, plus everything out front. Yep, so, that's it.
I've got a few things, thank goodness, because we have twenty minutes yet unless, or we take a break, but. First, as a reminder, State of the City is next Tuesday night, and you should all have the invites, what have you, but hopefully you're able to attend, and I'm just excited about this. It, this is, it's really, it's, it's not a reflection of an office, it's not a reflection of a governing body. It's a reflection, it's not a reflection just of city staff either. It's a reflection of community, the civility that we have. It, it's just that culmination of how we all work together, representing the community and, and prioritizing what they, they believe to be important and, and all that, so. Should be a good little thing, and we'll be livestreamed as well on Facebook, so I know they're getting that ironed out. At the, the monthly mayors and managers meeting, we discussed a event piece coming called America Two Fifty that America celebrates its two-hundred-and-fiftieth next year. Part of what's driving this is the city Grand Rapids is celebrating their one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary, so they're, they're making a big to-do, but there was some pitch, and I think we're still getting some details around it yet. I do believe I got roped into on the email today. I think I did see, I got roped into being one of, Griffin and I were, the Gran, Granville City Manager and I were.
Oh, yeah, you volunteered, that's right.
Yeah, volunteer, yeah. Yes, well-told. To help just plan it, I think, for the suburban cities, and we did just have a reach on. I've not got into the details yet. Somebody at a national level of bringing a, a tour bus, a, a traveling exhibit actually into the city, so. More to come on that, but I don't want anybody to be surprised. It's obviously something we, you know, we, we, we do our pledge of allegiance here. We do our invocation. A lot of the fundamental things that are part of this country's founding to not recognize it and its two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary would, would, would be a bit of a mess, but I think we're working out the details. We want each community to have their individual identities in doing this. What that looks like is what we're working on, so.
Yeah, and a lot of that to jump out what Mary was saying, and just more awareness of all the events that are going on in the whole general area and the state. I mean, the state has a, a group looking at some celebrations too, so it's a lot of sharing information on social media, maybe through the commission of this is going on here, this is going on there, but all in recognition of that and potentially a resolution of support at some point, we talked about amongst the communities, at least in the Grand Rapids area.
Well, and you think about it, I'll do my quick math. It was fifty-one years after this country's founding that this township was formed, or we were formed as a township, so it wasn't that far after. So we have our, I mean, our own history there as well to bring up, so just wanted to, it's on the radar, be aware we're speaking about it. Wanted to thank Nicole. I was invited to speak to the, uh, some of the Standale merchants. It was actually quite a nice turnout. Little meetup and just did a mini State of the City without giving too much away before next week of, the priorities remain the same, and they're the same really that reflect the priorities of the community. And just shared that, some really good discussion about things. It just, it was, it was good to see that type of turnout, and there was a lot of new faces that, that were there as well, so that was kind of neat to see. For those that were not aware, there is a new business coming into Standale called The Pump House, which I'm sure a lot of us recognize. And had a chance to meet the owner and just tour the building. It's in the, the, that strip mall where the library currently is, the temporary library is. It is the very corner one next to the Hookah Lounge, but a lot of glass, very visible. They're working through some things right now from a zoning thing of where everything's laid out there and stuff, but kind of cool to see that business like that, and they're gonna be open year-round too. So even though that there is ice cream, there's a topping bar to have you, they plan on having, they've talked about maybe even having a coffee area in there that they might have some waffle stuff, because they've got the waffle cones there, doing something waffle-related in the morning for breakfast, so. Yeah, 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 I like that, so. Yeah, we'll fight for that corner seat in there, but, um, yeah, we'll welcome Jamie and his family into the city as they're getting going on that. And then I think one of the things that we don't, and I don't list every single one of them because there's a number of them at any given time period in between meetings, but the city manager, myself, and both chiefs actually met with the township supervisor from Talmage the other day, and it's just something that we value the relationship. A lot of the knowledge of the individuals, it's professional, but it's also personal nature, but so much of what we do, I would say in some ways is complementary to one another, but it's also interdependent that we get our planning right, developments that we're communicating on. But it was just, it was a nice discussion. I, I, and the same thing goes on with Alpine, you know, that we've got those relationships and then Granville as well, so. Just you, you, the longer you do this, you realize that it's uncommon that municipalities in a region do this on a frequent. So I just, I, just a good story I want at least to share on that, and there is gonna be more continued growth out into Talmage, um, out towards the Megabev and what have you out there. And then last but not least, might have been tipped off to a, a bridge pour for the other deck up on Fruit Ridge. Just a shout-out to MDOT, to the crews out there working. This was one of the nights last week. It was just so cool to wa, I mean, you can't help but get excited. Some of us don't work around that every day. It's pretty cool to see, but they're just out there doing it. You know, they were moving quickly with, with the pour and everything else. Everybody had a job to do, really a, a well-orchestrated effort up there. But the one thing that stuck out to me from where I parked and I was walking back to my truck was the non-motorized path. That solves a lot of problems, and to see it there, it's, it's crushed gravel right now. It's not paved, but to see what, how wide that's going to be, how nice it's gonna be for families and so forth to be able to get up to the Fred Meyer Trail up there, I mean, just the, the, all that, that last bit of connectivity we've not had, and then you look along Three Mile right now and see that same thing, kind of that double sidewalk that people can be bike, biking, walking, jogging, all at the same time on. It is, is pretty cool, so. You know, we thank you again. Senator Heisinger was a huge, huge advocate. Without him, we don't get that, to get that money coming in. Chamber of Commerce was a great advocate for it and, you know, all of that along the way, so a lot of, a lot of people are involved with this, but it took this, this, you know, body to be supportive of it, and it just, it's gonna be a huge impact on it, so. That's all I had. I tried to come up with more things to fill the time, but it is eleven minutes away. We will start soon enough here, seven o'clock, so we'll, we'll stand temporarily adjourned until seven.
They have, they have a fair lot of commercial, industrial, but they don't have, we have a little bridge. Now, those nice, good, good group of mayors. Always like to see more of them. Be agree there can be something in the city. Another, other groups, we had, we had AARP coming on this one. It was the, some stuff, or even some stuff that's outside our school. How they actually did funding for Zane Center. They have a major film shoot, so we probably see that advertising for. Charles Sankis, we have that building that initially changed to where they call it Seater Center. And I guess we're about to actually have a site near a mini help like. It's like, I mean, it's about to be Seater Center, so kind of, I think, for target, so. It's a nice, actually, that's, I was actually looking at, I was looking at chairs and furniture and thinking, that was nice. You know, they really could have the cabinets up. They got some walls that the inside of the cabinets had four tracks inside there in the back. Yeah, exactly, that's what back of the shelves, that basically is had, now these are walls.
Oh, that's kind of cool.
Yeah, this is different.
Well, that's a good way to incorporate that. Useful at the.
No, this was nice, just, again, with that connection, I would like to say with, um, I had the first night with Mayor Moore in the legislature. Then the group, us, around the St. Walker, they actually have a year's, that's probably, and they got that big, that's our seventy-one big one. They have the only two zero ones, it's a single pole, is that one. And so, so it's probably to be able to go through and just take your kind of, walk around, get. And I.
I know, but why have more or two?
Yes, yes, and that's the small one, yes. Just asking maybe a couple of questions, just to be some, the serial, see the capacity, and, or, just. No, it's nice, and I. Well, and again, we talk about the recalculation, location, location. And the corner spot with all the glass and there, and it would be to be lighting, we're showing you the lights, and it's, it's, I don't think it was just to it. That's pretty nice. Nice green branch, close, as I heard, so now this is a, a whole pressure.
A little more solid, I think.
Yes, yes, yep. And it, that's huge, how these were, and then areas where he helped with the practice, things, and we're thinking of trying this year about having a, I hope, if you're coffee, then do some of your waffles. We think coffee would be greatly, the more, the pressure. That was one of us have secrets, you know, around here, but can you imagine walking into the small restaurants?
Yeah.
Boy, that echoes in a sailor room, doesn't it? All right, welcome, good evening, everyone, um, it is Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, this is the Walker City Commission, regular commission meeting, um, I have the invocation this evening, if you would allow me. As we gather this evening in service to our community, we pause first in remembrance as this week is the anniversary of the September eleven attacks, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. This week marks twenty-four years since the tragic events of September eleven, two thousand and one, a day that forever changed our nation and deepened our respect for those who protect and serve. We honor the courage of first responders, past and present, and ask for continued wisdom and strength as we lead with purpose, unity, and gratitude. May our work tonight reflect the very best of public service, we ask this in your great name, amen. I'd like to have invite you to stand, join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could please ask the clerk to call the roll?
Mayor Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Present.
Commissioner Babcock?
Present.
Commissioner Chase?
Present.
Commissioner DeShane?
Present.
Thank you all, and I will entertain a motion and support for the absence of Commissioner Groetersen Burke, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Commissioner Chase, DeShane, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, thank you all. Uh, next on the list is approval of minutes from the August twenty-five city commission meeting, is there any discussion on said minutes? Seen, hearing, none, and I'll entertain a motion for approval and support, please.
So moved.
Support.
Commissioner Gilbert, Commissioner Babcock, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, thank you all. Next is public comment gen items, we have no public, um, in the audience tonight, uh, next is item nine is consent agenda expenditures in the amount of five million two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Is there any discussion or questions on the bills? Seen, hearing, none, I'll entertain a motion for approval and support, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Commissioner Chase, Commissioner DeShane, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, bills are paid, thank you. Next is the second reading of ordinance to amend chapter eighteen, article two, division two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Walker to adopt the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, again, this is the second reading, we've already approved the first one, is there any other discussion on said ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Gilbert.
Support.
Commissioner Babcock, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, all right, one more time, quick around the horn, there's no public here, so no other public comment, uh, Madam Clerk, Commissioner, Commissioner, Doctor, Doctor, some city manager, I'll entertain a motion for approval and adjournment, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Boy, we really definitely are on the side thing tonight, aren't we? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, stand adjourned, thank...